Director. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I have just one announcement, which is that the board met in executive session for 30 minutes this evening prior to the reception for our retirees who we honor this evening. And then we were receptive for 30 minutes, and all board members are here with us this evening in person. Our first agenda item is the recognition of the students who participated in the Environment Fund State Competition. I'm not seeing any.
Unfortunately, I don't think that any of them were able to make it this evening.
Okay, well, let's read their names to honor them all the same.
So five Lewisburg area high school students competed yesterday in the 2022 Pennsylvania Environment State Competition at Camp Mount Luther in Nifflenberg, PA. The team placed 16th in the Solus Contest out of 700-plus to high schools from across the state. Team members include Mike Azuk, Jonah Carney, Cara Breeding, Gabriella Rosenberg, and Tajah Degard. And the team advisor is Mr. Ragnar.
Congratulations to those students. Mr. Heath kindly reminded me that we also met in executive session for 45 minutes following our board retreat last week, so thank you for that. All right, then, our next agenda item is the sad and honorable task of recognizing our 2022 and 23 districts retirees as well as retirees from the past two years when we were unable to recognize them. Mrs. Moser?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I told the seniors on Tuesday night that one of my very favorite things to do is present the class. So one of my almost very favorite things to do, or my second very most favorite thing to do, is anytime we can honor the wonderful people who comprise the staff of the Lewisburg School District, and I'm very happy to be doing that this evening for even an extra-large group perhaps, because as Dr. Zimmerman said, we want to reach back and honor those who retired from the 2020 school year that got preempted in March when we all went home and didn't come back. And then even 2021, when our meetings were not such that we were open and able to bring you in and enjoy some time together. So our retirees from the school year 2020 who did receive their certificate suitable for framing mailed to you at your home, but we're so happy you're here with us tonight. And the way this works, I call the name, come up, and we've got a building principal queued to share some insights and some wonderful with you. So in the order in which I have them here, from 2020, in our high school guidance office, she worked as our clerical aide for 12 years, Rebecca Moyer. Becky, come on up here. I get the hug. Okay. And Ms. Reber?
So first, I'd like to say that I am so grateful that we get to honor those that retired in 2020 and that they get to be able to have this in person. Becky was always just a calm, pleasant force in the guidance office. And if any of you know, the guidance office can get extremely hopping at key times during the year, especially when applications are due or someone's worried that a transcript hasn't been sent. And she was able to be unruffled and just able to calmly help the students with what they needed. And it was definitely a loss when she retired. And so fortunate to have you here at the high school.
Thank you.
Becky wants to know if we really met. Yes.
I miss the kids. I really, and I miss seeing a lot of the people that I work with, but I really do miss the kids.
Yeah.
But I enjoyed working with you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Temple, a little bit my own putter-patter heart, a social studies teacher and our athletic director. Mark, come on up. Yours again?
Mine again. And so I would just say that I do not know anyone who bleeds green more than Mark Temple, who was passionate in the classroom about his subject area, but about forming relationships with his students and making sure that our athletes had everything ready and set to go and always their biggest proponent, their biggest advocate. So proud of them. He just always exuded that pride in Lewisburg, that pride in our students, and that personal connection that just has had a very lasting effect on them.
Mr. Temple?
Just throw it there, I'm very grateful to you and Dr. DeRocco for, the one thing that's been, I think Lewisburg has always done very well is they're not afraid to spend a little extra money to hire experienced teachers. And I was blessed and fortunate to be able to return to my home. It was great. But as Becky said, I miss the people I work with. I don't miss the stress. But I do miss just the excitement of the building and stuff like that.
All right. Joyce Gessner, middle school food service manager, 26 years of value.
I just, it is unimaginable how many thousands upon thousands of kids Joyce has fed breakfast and lunch through the years. I got to work with her on very rare occasion. These were like the Christmas meals and Easter meals. And it kind of take for granted of what's going on. There's a meal being served. All the kids are going there in the cafeteria. They're eating. And Joyce was responsible for all of it. And not until you actually are scooping the mashed potatoes on all the plates, do you realize how hard this work is. And I was just serving it. And she made it, answered, and charted, and made sure that all the kids were taken care of for years and years, no matter what it was that we needed from Joyce from the kitchen. She was there to provide it and did, and almost always with a smile on her face. It was great. Very grateful.
Any words? You're welcome.
I appreciate everything you just said. But no, I do, I miss the coworkers. I had a wonderful group of ladies all the years I worked there. They, we worked together very well. And I miss the students. So what I do enjoy is when you are out in public and a boil, sir, a girl must say, oh, I know you from somewhere. I enjoy that. But no, I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Three more names from that group of 2020, and let me please just share them with everyone. Diane Baker worked at Lindtown as a reading specialist with 16 years of service. And our newest news about Mrs. Baker is she now resides in sunny Florida. So I think retirement is probably agreeing with her as well. Peggy O'Connor, a third grade teacher with 19 and a half years of service to the district, and the kindergarten teacher, Marcia Noster, with 20.5 years of service. So we think of them this evening as well. In 2020, 2021, the following were our retirees and one that is here among us tonight. We're glad to celebrate with Penny Golden, the middle school library clerical aide. Shall I tell them 21 years of service? Mr. Reddison?
Well, a common theme, and I mentioned that Joyce, whenever we needed something, she was there to provide it. Penny was the exact same way, if not the example that we should all look at of chipping in whatever was needed. Well, library aide is, you know, has its own set of skills and responsibilities, but Penny was well outside of that. She brought tech into the library, the dragon wagon, which is our lost and found. I don't know how many times you emptied that out, washed the clothes, and they were there. Kids either reclaimed them, very seldom reclaimed them, but they were there to give away the following year to kids who needed them. And if Penny didn't do that, and she said, I want to do that. There were delivering newspapers in the mornings, everything that you need to, that are behind the scenes for the school that needed to be done. Penny did it. And oftentimes, she asked, can I do this, rather than me asking her to do something? But then, so she'd have a full busy day, kids running in and out of the library all day, and then I go to a game that night, and who's there? I have to buy my ticket from. It's Penny. And so she has touched us in so many different ways. And I'm so grateful for all you've given to the middle school and the district. Thank you, Penny.
That's very sweet. Thank you. Like everybody said, I miss the people. I miss the kids. You know, thank you. I enjoyed working at the district, even the 10 years at the old high school.
Very good.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Not with us tonight, but let me take you through who we have as well that left us after the 2020-2021 school year. Camille Tiermane, a certified instructional aide with 13 years. Pamela Kramer, our special education coordinator, with 16 years of service. Debbie Whelan, our high school administrative secretary, 21 and a half years of service. Keith Spiegelmeier, district maintenance, 26.5 years of service. I'm going to keep increasing. Kirk Knoll, middle school head custodian, 27.5 years of service. Nancy Halk, food service worker, 29.5 years of service. And yes, Pete Ellis, health and physical education teacher, 33 years of service. And again, these individuals have all received their certificates from us, but they round out the group of staff that left after the 2021 school year came to conclusion. Bringing us to tonight and our opportunity to celebrate those who are with us this evening, choosing to retire here at the end of this school year. First person we'll bring forward for certificate and comments, middle school math teacher, Kay Zach. Ms. Kay leaves us 33 years service to the district. Mr. Reddison?
33 years, almost exclusively at the middle school, which is, and I was listening to Mr. West as we're walking up the hall from the reception, saying that he is now the longest-tenured middle school staff member. And it's by a long shot that Kay had him beat. Kay is another one of those folks in the middle school, and we're loaded with them. We're so blessed to have people like Kay, that if it's best for kids, we do it. And it is in the math classroom. It is what she's offering for clubs and activities. It is what she's offering in team meetings, joining the SAP team, whatever team she's on, and to make those valuable contributions, but always doing it from the lens of what's good for my kids. Our discussion about how you read kids when they're in middle school and how you project what they might be like when they get older. She has a real knack that it's uncanny, but it's so accurate. And she sees these kids as sixth graders and can view what they may be like and what it's going to take from her to turn them or help turn them into the young adults that they want to be and that can be. And we're so grateful. We're going to miss you so much.
Thank you, George. I appreciate that. And first of all, congratulations to all the others who are retiring. I wish you the best of luck. Also, to the current and the past board and administrators, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to teach in the Lewisburg School District. It truly, it was an honor and a privilege to work in the middle school. And like everybody has said, I will, you know, I got into teaching like I hope most teachers do, with a love for children. And I'm really happy that I'm leaving with that same lot. And I was blessed this year, too. It was a difficult year, but it was, but I also had a really great group of kids. And to be able to leave on that note is really very special. And I recall a former colleague saying, you're going to know when it's time to go. And it's time to go. And it's, that's okay. It's been 33 years, and they've been 33 good years. And it's time to enjoy the life. So again, I thank you very much. Good luck to everybody else. Thank you.
Let's retire. We honor tonight, high school chemistry teacher for 16 years with us, Mrs. Angela Docley. Who deserves a certificate? Love the smile. Go, girl.
Ms. Reber, you first and then I. So I have often said, I wish I had a high school chemistry teacher like Mrs. Docley, because, one, I no longer cringe when I see the periodic table, which took me, you know, several years not to do.
True.
But she, she makes it so accessible to all of her students. They feel so welcome in her classroom, the relationships that she builds with them, her belief in them and in whatever they choose to do. She is an amazing individual and teacher. Not that, I'm going to tear it back to you.
As everyone said, I too will miss the students and my wonderful colleagues, but I won't miss them too much because since I'm going a little earlier than I had planned to, I have a couple of years to come back to myself, which will be great, because I can come play with my students and my family and friends. Like Mark said, I am also grateful to Lewisburg and Mark DeRocco for the belief here of hiring experienced teachers. That also was a blessing to me, but I moved here from Connecticut after eight or nine years of teaching.
Okay.
And I'm grateful for the school board's continuous support of what we do here. This is my third district, and this is the district that has the school board. It is a professional school board. There is a school board that believes in education before other things, as well as other things, but before other things. And that's important, and I truly appreciate that. And Paula, I'm so grateful to you and your leadership here and your friendship. And I'm really going to miss you, but I'll be back. Thanks so much.
With us this evening and being honored, Stephanie Jackson, certified school nurse. Stephanie, 21 years of service to the district. We can share, Mr. West.
I'll say a few things, and then Eric can chip in. Now, Stephanie had a career before becoming the school nurse in the 1990s, I believe. And there are certain kind of go-tos in the district. Wellness committee, who do you go to if you have a question? You go to Stephanie Jackson. If you want first aid certification, or you want to learn CPR, who do you go? You go to Stephanie Jackson. Her, well, SAP team also. Her contributions in the school and the district are just like that, that the kids are taken care of, but there is so much more to do to make the school run, to make the school work. It is, it's, I don't know, I really enjoy working with her because it's always on the same wavelength. It's always the kid first. And then are we seeing things that we need to be concerned about outside of this one student, outside of this one day, outside of this one situation? And she brings it all together, but she's had the experience with these same kids from fourth grade on up through when we're seeing them and sending them off to the high school as eighth graders. And that attention to detail with the students and the attention to detail with all the other stuff that comes along with being a school nurse is really what makes Stephanie Jackson special. Eric?
Perfect lead into what I was going to say. I think the attention to detail also with working in two buildings. There are some days where she's working in two buildings on her own, that she's covering both buildings. And as soon as she goes to the middle school, inevitably, something happens, the bear claw attacks at Lindtown or something. So we're calling Stephanie, like, we promise it's an emergency. We know, we said it would only be emergencies, but it is. And her calmness and her ability to manage both of those buildings, to make sure that we're covered when we have field trips, to try to reach out and get coverage if her roof would be out. And I think the ability to even transition from the middle school to Lindtown and just be able to relate to those kids, and all those kids know that they'll be well taken care of, that she can help them with whatever troubles, big or small, maybe when they come to see her. She just has such a calm presence that reassures those kids and gets them to a calm state, and she gives them the best care she can. She will be greatly missed, for sure.
I have to say, this was the absolute best career I could have ever done. I did a few things before becoming a school nurse, but they actually helped me get the position of certified school nurse. And I did some one day in a school, but I had 26 days of a practicum. That was outstanding and really, it really set me up to just the best thing I could have ever done. And I always loved education. I wanted to be a teacher. Actually, growing up, I was the oldest, so my siblings were my students. And that didn't work out. There was too many people going into education, and I wasn't going to teach physics or calculus or any of those subjects. So I thought, okay, so I did something else. But the administration at the Lewisburg School District has always been behind us nurses. If we really needed something, they found a way to get it for us. And we do cover a lot of things. And unfortunately, some of it was safe equipment, and it was, we were never told no. I mean, you know, we were reasonable. But it was the best 21 years that I've ever spent, and I am so glad that Lewisburg hired me. And I'm glad that I was able to be there and take care of all the kids. And I will miss the children and the staff. It was a hard decision, actually, but now I can weed my flowers in the morning and afternoon instead of at 8 o'clock at night. But thank you, everybody. It's, I am going to miss everybody. Thank you.
Retiree here with us this evening. I wouldn't measure his impact by just five years of service. I think in many, many ways, Mr. Timothy Shaw has made large impact here in our high school. Tim? So if you pull up at the high school in the morning, Tim is probably who you see outside. And he has this wonderful ability to make sure that he greets kids by name. And that is so powerful, because some of our kids need that. They need to hear that personal touch. Tim, what you've done with some of our kids over at Sun, and taking them to and fro, and just believing in them, and just like that special gift that you were given the other day, sometimes the kids that it's, don't exhibit it in the, in the best way, or the kids that need the love the most, and you're always there to give it. And thank you.
It's dangerous to be an audience. However, I will, Paul is correct. It seemed like I had the worst of the worst, always on my caseload. It just seemed that way. They were the worst of the worst because nobody ever gave them the attention they deserved or needed. And so the process was find out, what are they interested in? What can we do to motivate them? With Mr. Don Byler's help, we found that shop was motivating some of these kids. So yes, I have two cutting boards that were made by two particular students. One was all hail the bald man. And that individual graduated this week after a struggle, but again, was a student that nobody else really took the time for. You know, and we developed a unique relationship. Most people would have thought she was being nasty to me, and would have thought I was being nasty back to her, but that was her method of communicating, and that was her method. And, and my way of voting before with her, and it turned her into a productive student. The first student that ended up on my caseload, the first day in class, I sat there and I looked at him, and I said, I could be your best friend, or I could be your worst enemy. He looked at me and he says, I think I'll pick best friend. He went on to tech, into the weld. But first of all, started out in, he was into the, a different avenue his first year at tech. Was very successful at it, but decided he went into welding his second year. He came out of the welding program, one of the top welders of his class, was hired at Playworld for co-op. And after one week of working at Playworld, they told him, the day you graduate, expect to be working overtime, because we want you here. Yeah, we want this to be your place. As far as I know, he's still there. I have heard. And if he, and I'm sure right now, he's well over $20 an hour. This was a kid that everybody gave up on. Wouldn't that happen? He drove crazy, drove absolutely crazy. But he's successful. Another student that I spent two weeks at tech with prior to school starting year. Tech was about to give up on it. They just didn't, they didn't understand. And they were, they had higher expectations of what he could produce. Once they got beyond that and realized he was absorbing materials, not as quickly as others, but he was absorbing it. He's now making a living, yeah, being productive. Yeah, it was challenging. Each and every one of them are challenging. The one that Paula referred to, that just gave me the cutting boards. I couldn't understand why he finished his project, which it was finished. But since he finished early, he got to do another project. And he kept pestering Mr. Don Byler. Mr. Don Byler, where can I use a laser? Why can I use a laser? Why can I use a laser? I didn't know what he was up to. I had no clue. I missed a class. That was the day the cutting board went on the laser. Couple days later, he comes walking in and presents it to me. And it's like, whoa. But this was a kid that everybody else gave up on. But this was a kid that everybody else gave up on. Comes from a broken family, has no male influence at all in his life. And he looked at me and he said, we gotta start that way. I said, no, not really. I said, you just had to understand, I would have been abandoned. I said, once you got that point across, we were fine. You know, and today was his last day here. He won't be in the district next year. He's already said, you are gonna come watch him play football, right? I said, absolutely. You get on the team, I'll come see you. But yeah, he, today, he was so talkative, sharing all kinds of different things. Talking about cars, talking, it was like, all of a sudden, after all this year, we finally got to that point where he felt comfortable talking to me one-on-one and just sharing all kinds of different ideas. That's the part I'm gonna miss, although I'm convinced my dog is an emotional support needy dog. So I will use my emotional support skills on my dog. But everybody says, you know, that's, hey, you're coming back sub, right? I will not be doing that. It's time to move on. Again, somebody else had mentioned, you know, it's time, it's time. It's time to enjoy, you know, whatever time I have left, whatever God grants me. It's time for me to enjoy that. And I'll be in my shop for you. So it, that's, that's my retirement. That's what's going to happen. Enjoy my grandkids, which that's why I'm dressed the way I am tonight. I apologize, I was coaching a T-ball game. So I had to leave that early. And yeah, I must be crazy to coach a T-ball, or whatever. That's, that's a whole different thing. But yeah. And some of those kids are gonna be future emotional support students. But I wanna thank, first of all, Paula, Eric. I interviewed, they were in the interview. It's disappointing. But, and Mrs. Fennel. And Mrs. Fennel probably didn't quite know how, you know. But yeah, that was okay. Yeah, we, we had our differences, but we got through. And yeah, she didn't understand all my tactics, but it was okay. She came to accept it and realized that I wasn't gonna change for her. She would get changed for me, so. I will miss being out front in the mornings. I will miss that because I was fortunate, not just the kids on my caseload, but all of the students. You know, getting to know them, getting to see them, watching them perform. Unbelievable. We have such a talented pool of students in this school district. And it's because it's built from the bottom up. So continue that. Continue building it from the bottom up. I met with Mr. Popovich today. And I disagreed with what he said because I'm not that kind of like, I'm not irreplaceable. There will not be a void when I walk out of here. Somebody else will step up. Because that's just the way I was. I stepped up. There was a need, I stepped in. That's just me. And yeah, that's not gonna get to that. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. It was a great pre-retirement position. And yeah, again, challenging, but it's so important. So, bye.
Our next retiree has made such a difference in the high school counseling office with 29 years of service, Mrs. Vicki Fennell. So Britain had the Beatles, Lewisburg has the Fennels. If you notice, they're even dressed alike. This could have been planned or unplanned because many times they showed up like, oh, hey, wow. The absolute, Vicki never fails to, and, and we've been telling her this all week, like she has to come in or do a podcast, she and Bill or something every day, like, kind of like Ellen DeGeneres, like with the dancing and things. You know, she never fails to be there for whoever needs it. She does so much behind the scenes. Not just for our students, not just for, you know, our families, for our community. You have no idea of everything she does. The number of families that she translates for, you know, that they, they wanna call and talk to Ms. Vicki. Have trust with her. She knows that, that she's non-judgmental, that she has compassion and that she will do whatever to make them succeed. And we will miss you so very much, but we also will be on the phone with you a lot.
So, oh, we're not done.
I know, we're not done.
Oh, we're not done?
Mr. Wetzel, your chance because you're hard with Ms. Vicki.
Oh, where to start?
Just one.
She made me very comfortable being uncomfortable. But she was someone, I mean, I, I could go to, and I think any of us, we kind of had our own, I feel like, debriefing almost daily. Paula, myself, Vicki and Emily would all get together and just kind of debrief on what happened. We were all on the same page with things and we knew that was a space where we could just bounce ideas off of each other. And, and really Vicki would have the background, the knowledge, the history and just the overall compassion and everything really to help us. If we needed anything, she would know it. She would, she would be able to tell us why things were done the way they were, the history, the way things adapted and changed. And I think like Paula said, it's, it's not just our students, just everything she did for everybody. Even the holiday parties for the kids. She's awesome. She's awesome. So thank you.
Mr. Rule got to work with Ms. Fennell as well. And Chris, you've been a, a silent one here so far tonight. Something else maybe yet before we let Vicki speak?
Everything it was said, I, I experienced as well firsthand. Vicki's also my neighbor. Vicki and Bill are both my neighbors and I can ask for better people. But Vicki's heart, she, she knows the history of this district. She knows the history of our community. And she knows what our students, staff, community, what they need. And she just has that innate sense and could always help with the right, in the right way at the right time. And I'm just so thankful to be able to have worked with her.
So I, I think, you know, when I came here, I already had some experiences, as you probably know, penitentiary. No, and then you know, counseling somewhere else. But, you know, I think most of you know what brought me here was my husband. We, we got married. I was living somewhere else and fortunately I was able to get a job here. So my sense of community, I think, comes a lot out of him and his family. So I really appreciate that. And I, I just, you know, I figured out today that two-thirds of my life have been in education. You know, it's a long time. And in like 44 years, which is my total experience, like I've seen so much change and there were so many needs changed. But I think, you know, what you all have said, and I appreciate the words, was I think you just need to stay true to the, to the students that you're with and to the staff and to try to assess their needs and to try to adapt, you know, with, with what they're saying. So I, I guess I, I like to think that over the course of my career, that maybe I've helped a few people and maybe I've had an impact on a few people. And I hope that, you know, that they remember that, that I was their friend. I wanted to help. I'm so sorry. But thank you so much for hiring me, even though I don't know if anyone was here when I was hired. I did help my doctor Drago with that now. But, but yes, thank you. It's just been wonderful. We're going to stay in the community and, you know, we're gonna continue to be strong supporters of this school district because we do love everything that you all are doing and trying to do. And, you know, hopefully we'll see, see all of you around. Thank you very much for everything you've done for me. Thanks.
One more retiree present with us to honor tonight. Mr. William Fennell, French teacher, 42 years of service. And I am gonna ask everyone seated here tonight, I think this one's a standing ovation. All right. When you're ready to spread this out, not that I'll retire. I have never met someone as interesting as Bill and just the knowledge and the little details and the side stories of things that he knows. And just fascinates me. And again, just that going above and beyond, whether it's staying after to work with students. If someone's been sick, making sure that, you know, he goes out of there, out of his way to get them caught up. His love for theater and the arts and all of the wonderful displays that have helped support our music programs. Getting kids interested, not just in the French language, but in the culture. And, you know, and then all, you know, the, the duo activities, whether it, you know, the holiday parties that they hosted. You know, when, when we would have the Mardi Gras cakes upstairs and hoped that no one would swallow the plastic baby. I only know of once. And they, they just, you know, not only did they come away with the knowledge of the content, but a true appreciation for the culture and your love and passion for it, that translates through to the kids. And there is only one Mr. Fennell. And Mr. Drosen was Mr. Fennell's first class?
Yes. The first year I was here, I had Mr. Drosen as a student. He was very nice to me. And made me feel welcome and Mr. Temple. How about sixth year I was here? Third year, okay, so. Thanks for making me not feel so cold.
Mr. Rule, I'll go to you as well before Mr. Wetzel this time.
Vicki and Bill are a team. And everything they do is in service of the same goal, which is to make our kids' experience in school better and to make them better people. To expand what they already know and teach them something that they didn't know. And you still love going on those bus trips to New York City and hearing some of those stories. And you giving me some new experiences by inviting me along and watching our students grow with those. Thank you.
Um, I think like Paula said, just the, the experiences you gave kids with the overall culture, with the Yule logs, the cane cakes, the Mardi Gras dance, the sugar overload of the Yule logs. Twitching this year and like, what's going on? I'm missing out on these Yule logs. You can never say no. But I think doing, just always doing whatever you could for the kids. And, and your style is impeccable. There's no one that has better style or has the shirts, the outfits to fit any occasion. And, and again, I think that's just to make it fun and, and give that enjoyment for the kids. And, and like everyone said, I think you and Vicki are a team and you always put the kids first and, and didn't let anything stop you from, from doing what you could for them. I think even with, with the time when you went over to France and in fifth grade, they read The Family Under the Bridge. So you went around France, you were taking pictures of different sites that the book highlights. And then even sharing that with the kids and sharing that with them to give them that experience that you wanted to, to show them what it looks like in real life. And that's something that may seem small, but the extra time and energy and effort you put into that and the difference that made for those kids and their experience with that book is just one example of, of many that we could share of all you've done for them. And you think of all the lives you've touched and the impact you've made. I think that's everyone's kind of goal here, when, when they retire, to be able to feel they've impacted as many people as you have. So thank you for everything. Thank you.
All right. I know most of you or certainly some of you had a chance to read the retirement letter that I wrote. But for the people that didn't get to read it, I was just gonna give maybe a Cliff Notes sort of summary of the major points in it. And I did have a couple of thoughts after I'd written the letter, and I'll try to make this brief. So I will read the beginning of, of the letter. And, because it relates to a couple of the thoughts that I had afterward. And so it began with, after the logistics of retiring, during the summer of 1975, shortly after receiving my BA in English and French from Bucknell University, I attended a preview performance of a Broadway musical about dancers, the chorus line. Near the end of the musical, the dancers are asked what they would do if they could no longer dance. The character Diana Morales gives her reply in the song, What I Did For Love. After hearing that song, I asked myself what career could make me feel like those dancers did about dancing? And my answer was teaching. Teachers were always and still are my heroes. My father was a professor of education and two of my teachers at Fredonia High School in Fredonia, New York, Ms. Lorna Penny, my ninth grade English teacher, and Mrs. Gwada Shiel, my French teacher, made my high school education exciting. Although I was headed on a different career path in 1975, I made the decision to go back to college and become certified to teach. Now, one of the thoughts I had afterwards, and although I knew when I wrote that paragraph that those names of those women would not really mean anything to anybody but myself and my wife. But they also hit at the, the idea that none of us get anywhere in life without other people helping us or, you know, inspiring us. And also particularly after COVID, the importance that the human element does still have in teaching. Because if I had never had Mrs. Shiel, there was no reason I would have ever been interested in French. But she, you know, inspired that interest in me. And one of the values of teaching in a high school is, I think that's the level where a lot of students get their first taste of what's important to them academically and what they might wanna study. And so I hope I've done that for some students. And then the middle of the letter basically dealt with my employment at Lewisburg High School since 1980. And yes, Dr. Icorn was the one who, who hired me, whose name's now on the building, but he was the one who hired me, was important to me in many personal and professional ways. And so the first way was it allowed me to live and work in Lewisburg, a community that had been important to my maternal grandparents and to my parents, who actually graduated from Lewisburg High School in 1940. And I've heard a lot of stories about life in Lewisburg High School in the 30s. And although I did not grow up here, you know, the, the town was important to me, hence the tie from the 80s. A second benefit was obviously I got to use my knowledge of those subjects that I had studied at Bucknell that were very important to me. And, you know, when I was teaching English, I would say among the most rewarding things were to teach works of American literature, although I taught practically all of the English courses before I switched to French, but of American literature, of these writers who I would say were my secondary heroes after teachers. And to share the love of those particular literary works with my students. And in terms of French, I think you sort of hit on that, although I had an interesting question from a student on Wednesday. on Wednesday, said, well, you know, what is your, has been your favorite, you know, units that you've taught in the French curriculum? And first I was like, I thought, well, what's my favorite tense? So I thought, well, I guess the Passat Home Rosé is my favorite tense of all the tenses. But then I said, well, really the things that I teach in French, you know, those cultural units on Paris, French art and Antoine de Saint-Exupery's The Little Prince. Third benefit, which may not necessarily seem like a benefit to most people, was even though I stayed in the classroom, all the professional development activities that went along with it, reading about different theories, Madeline Hunter Marzano and, you know, ATL and taking different things away from that. And during a couple of, or within the first couple of years of my teaching experience, the National Endowment for the Humanities came up with this program to have a program for secondary school teachers like they had at college level to get teachers from all over the country together and study a certain topic. And actually, two of my friends, professors from Bucknell who had done that said to me, Jill, you should apply for this. And so I did apply for it, was accepted. They accepted from all the teachers. In the United States, it applied only three hundred people. And actually, that year, one of the other English teachers of Lewisburg High School was also awarded it. So that was quite a coup for two of the teachers from the high school to get, to study those, at those seminars. And obviously, along with the professional development, was working with students outside the classroom in other ways. And as I said, the class of nineteen eighty-four will always be special to me because I was their class advisor and they dedicated their yearbook to me. And finally, as we've already talked about, a final benefit was being able to work with my wife. Because when we got married, we thought, well, where are we gonna live? And her principal wanted sort of to hire me and didn't want Vicki to leave. And buy the opportunity of her stories to stay here. And we made the right decision. You all mentioned the annual New York trip, so she helped with the organization for that for about forty years. The Mardi Gras dances, middle school dances, honor societies, and being Mr. and Mrs. Claus for the district employees' children. And so then this was my final comment. So as I'm preparing to close this chapter of my life and looking forward to new adventures, I still hear the lyrics of Diana Morales's song from a chorus line in my head. Quote, kiss today goodbye, point me toward tomorrow, won't forget, can't regret, what I did for love, what I did for love. So thank you for a wonderful life at Lewisburg High School.
We're not sure if it was pre-begging or for preparing for retirement. Absolutely.
Not with us tonight, but while we finish honoring retirees, let me just read the names of the other retirees here at the close of this school year. We've had Keith Kissinger, we've had Sharon Hummel, Alma Navarro, Ruth Horlocker, Laurie Miller, and Tammy Christini. And we appreciate all of those staff members who have given up their time, service, and expertise here to the district. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
To move on from that.
Sorry, I just jumped in. Just before everybody leaves, one, just one thing I would like to just share my appreciation as a relatively recent, right, graduate of Lewisburg. Vicki, to your question, you said that you hope people remember, and I'll, I'll answer that to say, yes, people remember. You know, for all of you sitting here, previous retirees, you know, as I went through the school district, I'm where I am right now because of all of you. So, you know, thank you for everything you guys have done. You know, I didn't realize how well I was prepared until I got to Bucknell and realized that I was really well-prepared for it. So again, just as a, you know, graduate of Lewisburg, sitting up here on the board now, I just want to share my personal gratitude for everything you guys have done. Again, past retirees and current retirees, you guys, the, the relationship that Lewisburg has always prided ourselves on as a district. Again, I mean, you know, we heard the stories tonight, those relationships, just you can't say enough about them. I could go on and on with stories about those relationships. And, you know, you guys all have my word for as long as I'm on the board, I'll keep fighting for, you know, for a district that is based on relationships. And again, we heard the stories of why that's so important tonight. So I'm sorry to interrupt the meeting, but I just wanted to share that all with you. So again, thank you personally for me.
Thanks, Mr. Fetzer. And on behalf of the whole board, I just wanna echo those sentiments and thank all of the retirees here tonight and those who couldn't be here tonight. And I just want to stress that we're aware that you have not just been a part of this community, but you have crafted and curated this community. And we really owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude. So thank you all very much on behalf of all of us. And with that, we move along to citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. I know we have some comments. Are there comments that are on agenda items? And are any of the people in the room who were hoping to speak tonight wanting to address an agenda item? Okay, our next item is the Student Council Representatives, and I do not believe we have students here this evening. So we will move along to the Board Representatives comments, and I'll start with you, Mr. Rule.
Thank you very much. I don't know quite how to follow the words of our retirees, but just again, thank you to, to all of them. One of our retirees, you mentioned Ms. Christini, helped organize our, her last field day this past Monday. We had to kind of put our plans for Friday on hold because of some potential for weather. And we got very, very lucky, the beautiful day on, on Monday. But just Field Day ran flawlessly, the volunteers that came out, the kids and their experiences. And, you know, it, it all falls to Ms. Christini and Mr. Campbell for their organization and communication and planning year after year. And just thank you to them for a wonderful, wonderful Field Day. I also want to give a, a thank you out to our PSA. At our last meeting, you know, the PSA is, is helping to take on an initiative to help provide support to all of our families around mental health needs of their children. And they're working on a informational series for the fall of next year. And looking to, they're doing a survey with our parents to try to see what areas they would be interested in at times of, of day that would work best for them. But I just really, really commend the PSA for, for stepping in, stepping up and moving forward with that initiative to complement the things that are already being done within the district to support our students. So thank you to them. And just the last thing I'm gonna share, we talk a lot about relationships and, and all those wonderful things. Today, I was invited to a party in Ms. McCaffrey's room. She's our emotional support teacher at Kelly. And she has several students that are moving on to Lindtown. And that transition has been a challenge for them. Because for so many of them, when they came to school in kindergarten, school was really hard. And it was hard to sometimes fit in and to find their place. And because of Ms. McCaffrey and many of our support staff, they were able to find that place and grow with their confidence. And she wanted to throw a little party for them today with milkshakes and slushies and those kinds of things. And the kids were so excited and got to invite all of their support teachers that have helped them over the years to come in and celebrate. And they had these giant balloons that they had with these smiley faces on them. And I remember one, one of the students was trying to collect all of them. And I said, what are you gonna do with all of those? And she says, well, it's just my happiness. And she comes over to me and she says, here, I want you to have some of my happiness. And that has a direct reflection on Ms. McCaffrey and her support staff and how they talk with their kids about communicating, identifying those feelings and sharing them, how good they have gotten over the years at being able to express themselves. So when you hear Tim talk about the work that he does when the kid, kids got up to the high school, you know, there, there's those foundational blocks that work all the way up through every one of our buildings and the special staff that support the kids along the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like it's like every year, it's kind of a roller coaster at the end, just all kinds of events and celebrations. Friday was PA Day for fourth grade, which was a great thing to be able to do again and bring back some guest presenters. We have just some phenomenal people that come in to give their time just to share. The one person just dresses up as Joseph Priestley and gives different presentations to kids. Mr. Wagner from the, the high school comes down and talks about the life of a coal miner. We have a lady that comes and shares, she actually, for her living, designed civil work clothing and talks to students about that. A professor at Penn College comes down to discuss chemistry and show kids really unique, creative chemistry experiments. And then Mr. Greek comes and talks about just Native American culture and shares with them some tools. And, and it's just a great way for them to get hands-on experiences with those things and kind of wrap up everything they've learned in social studies and science in, in fourth grade. That same day, fifth grade was at Knobbles, which is always a fun day. And it was, this year was surprising how many kids, it was the first time they've ever ridden a roller coaster. And just to hear them coming back in and sharing those stories and, and the smiles and some of the chaperone sharing pictures they got and the reactions of just like the wind-blown hair and the smile from ear to ear. So just an awesome time to see kids enjoying those experiences. Fifth grade fun day then happened Monday, which was another great thing and celebration for our kids to celebrate kind of their life as an elementary student. They're, they're kind of moving from that into the middle school. And just to celebrate that and give them that fun time and, and different activities for them to do. And just for our staff, it's, I think in, in all the buildings, it's very emotional at the end of the year for many different reasons, depending on the level you're in. And really keeping in mind, some of the emotions may be, this is a safe place for me, this is a place where I know I have routine, I have consistency. There isn't as much consistency outside of it. Others just knowing they're just gonna miss their teachers, their student teachers. And, and some that are just excited, like, let's get to summer, let's do this thing. But balancing all of those things and getting just positive experiences and getting a read on the students and figuring out the best way to make this a great end of the year for them, is just great to see at all times. So just want to thank the staff for all they've done for our kids and that they do every year and, and give them that closure and, and kind of advice and that boost to, to send them on to the next year. So just very thankful for that.
It's finishing the year strong is, you know, that's what Eric's kind of referencing. And that's what one of our goals is. And we have these activities at the middle school from Tuesdays outside awards assembly where community members have donated to create awards that, that we hand out on this day in front of, and in front of the entire student body. You know, it's a small thing, but it is an important thing. And it's, it's part of this process of getting, you know, putting an end to the school year in the right way. Yesterday was, the weather couldn't have been better for our Field Day Fun Day. And that doesn't, the Field Day, the weather you can't control, but the Field Day Fun Day happens out of the generosity of our PSA and our faculty and staff. Mr. Sikoria is a teacher that gets a lot of the credit, deserves a lot of the credit because he organized a lot of it, made trips to Walmart to get the things that we needed to have our minute to win it or to have the refreshments out on the field for the kids when they needed it. But it's an entire staff that puts it together and watches the kids and interacts with the kids. And, you know, and capitalizes on the relationships that they've built with those kids all year to make it a positive experience for everyone. Eric mentioned roller coasters. And here I am with my Knobbles band, riding the roller coasters with the eighth grade today. And I had to leave groups of kids behind because they were performing after the eighth, I was with the eighth grade. Our band orchestra and chorus performed at Knobbles today. And kind of a, the music teachers wanted to give the kids more opportunity to perform. And they didn't have to, it was extra work, but they did. And from what I've heard, they did great. So we're looking forward tomorrow with, to have our inside awards, our talent show, and be able to send off the kids in a real positive way, some of them up to the high school. So it's the last we'll see of them, and it hurts. I will talk right from that theme to give a shout out to our field hockey team, who definitely deserves it. For those of you that aren't aware, the middle school does soccer and field hockey in the spring rather than in the fall. And our field hockey team completed its season undefeated with seventeen shutouts. So what we are sending up to the high school, we expect some serious hardware by the time they get through the high school. All right, Ms. Reber.
So pretty quiet, not much going on. So it has just been a fabulous, fabulous end of the year. And first, I just want to say that I'm just so grateful that these kids are able to experience things as normally as they are, have been able to. Just the energy in the building, just them, the seniors, when they're realizing, like after the walk, when they're like kind of almost lingering to take those final steps out. Hearing them say to the underclassmen, you know, it really does go by fast. It really does. Let it, you know, just, you know, seeing them kind of reflecting on everything. And I have to give a tremendous shout out to Sharon Ditmar, Vicki Fennel, Christie Wary, Kate Hoover, and then to Tammy Ikey. And our substitutes, Mary Lebo, who has been in helping with Keystone testing, but also does anything, you know, that is asked or that's needed. The amount of work that goes into all of these activities takes such a tremendous amount of time. And, you know, so Sharon and Vicki, you know, on Monday, they're, they were in on Saturday for most of the day, making sure that everything was set for the awards assembly, which ran so smoothly. And then the next day, we're up at Bucknell getting ready for rehearsal and then graduation that night. It's a lot of extra work, but they just do a phenomenal job of making sure that it looks so effortless when it is absolutely the opposite of that. Today, we got to have our talent show again today after not having one for three years, I believe now. So that was really fun to have that back. Our girls softball team won tonight. That's where Mr. Popowicz and Ms. Beaver are this evening. So they will be playing for the title on Tuesday. Cross Plays in States on Tuesday also, I believe. And we have several athletes at the state track and field competition. So even though the year is winding up, you know, we're, we're still moving with some other things. But overall, especially to this senior class, what a group of role models they were. You know, they didn't really have anybody to watch as the leaders because it was cut short for them. And you're not really paying attention to, to that kind of thing when you're, you know, midway through your sophomore year. But boy, did they step up and do a great job.
Thanks. Thank you all. Our next is the annual food service report. Do we have Mr. Oswald?
Unfortunately, Mr. Oswald couldn't be here this evening, but I'm happy to present in his place. So we'll pull that up. So on a positive note here, some points of interest. And we've returned with in-person learning this year, and we also returned with in-person dining. So our kids return to the cafeteria tables and they, everybody received free meals for the students, thanks to the.
Thanks to the U S Congress and USDA. And just as an interesting note from business perspective, federal reimbursement rates are higher than paid lunch rate. So you'll see that a little later on. As I mentioned, our students resumed dining in our cafeterias and that brought on better participation in breakfast and lunches along with increased sales. We're still short-staffed in our kitchens, so we've been covering shortages here and there. Our team's been doing a great job of moving around as necessary. And again, unfortunately, this mirrors the labor shortages that you see in most industries nowadays. So just a little bit of financials here. Normally, it takes us until about February or March to get back in black for the food service, but so far through April, we're actually doing very well this year. So it's kind of an anomaly. We're not quite sure what to do with ourselves. But we are, we're in the black this year, which is a positive. Comparing to last year, the difference that having kids dining in the cafeteria and having them in person makes, you can see that the revenue this year has really taken off compared to the previous year. Same thing on the expenditure side. More kids eating, more food going through our cafeteria, so there is more of an expense. But again, we are to the black so far through the month of April and things are looking good in the month of May as well. Some concerns that we do have, Congress did not reauthorize the universal free meals. So starting in the fall of 2022, we're going back to the paid, free and reduced. So we will be notifying parents over the summer. Hey, just a reminder, if you believe your child should receive free meals, please go ahead and go online to our website and apply. We are concerned about issues with procurement. We've had some rough patches here this past year getting certain things and we know that inflation is driving up costs of food and supplies. And there's also been questions of some availability of some packaged foods. So we are concerned about increasing costs and keeping up with federal mandates for pricing increases. So we'll be covering that in a moment. As I said, like many industries, we have ongoing staffing concerns. We are doing our best to recruit. We're probably, I'd say, at least five to six people short across the entire district. And although we've managed to make it happen, the people that we do have working for us are working more, they're working extra hours, they are getting a little burnt out. So we're hopeful that starting in the fall, we can recruit some more folks and be more close to full staffing. And then we are concerned, once again, about student debt collection. Once free meals for everybody ends, obviously, we don't want any kids to go hungry. But we will have to make sure that folks don't run up a tab, if you will. So with that, any questions?
John, do you still get some database of people who should qualify so that you can auto use that still?
Yes, absolutely. We do. It, it's, the process is called direct certification and we do that every month. We check with the state database and they let us know who gets free meals automatically and we update our records from there.
Even if they don't complete the forty-five page?
We don't want them to complete the, the online form. It's not forty-five pages, it's just a couple screens. But yes, we do get that list from the state every month. So, yep.
Any other questions for Dr. Patel?
John, do we have any debt right now from the à la carte items?
Right now, the debt has held pretty steady. We, a couple of years ago, we started, we put in place a policy that while we will feed students the basic meal, you know, your, your entree, your vegetable, that sort of thing. Any student that has debt, we don't allow to purchase à la carte items like ice cream, cookies and chips. And that has actually done a really good job of keeping the debt accumulation to a minimum. And sometimes it helps motivate kids to go home and ask for a little bit of money to replenish their account so they can have an ice cream the next day.
So we're still carrying that debt from, at one point, four years ago, maybe it was at around twenty thousand.
It was around twenty thousand. It has dropped a little bit. We have been able to collect some of that. So, and, and we have written off some of that for kids that are gone. So, yeah, so it's pretty, holding pretty steady. I haven't checked the latest numbers yet, but.
If there aren't any other questions, then we'll move on to the food service prices presentation.
Okay, so, um, about our food service prices. Right now, as I mentioned, we're, we're looking at feeding our kids in an unsettled environment. A little bit of background for you. The Food Service Fund isn't like the general fund of the school district. It is, it must be self-sustaining. In accounting legal, it is a business-type fund, so it looks at both revenue and expenses. And it really runs only on the sales and the other income that we generate from the Food Service Fund. There isn't a tax revenue or, you know, subsidies that, that go towards this. We are regulated by not only the U S Department of Agriculture, the Pennsylvania Department of Agri- Education Division of Food and Nutrition. These are the folks that set the rules that we have to comply with. Our state and federal funding is based on the types of the meals that we sell, whether they are paid, reduced or free. Obviously, the reimbursement is the greatest for free meals. It's less for reduced and even less for paid meals. The program that we normally participate in is the School Nutrition Program or S N P. However, during COVID, they implemented what they call the Seamless Summer Option, which in larger school districts means everybody gets free meals during the summer. When the pandemic hit, they implemented Seamless Summer Option for all schools so that everybody could get free meals. So that's what we've been operating under since March of 2020, but that's what's going away in the fall of 2022 and we're going back to the School Nutrition Program. So because our Food Service Fund has to be self-sustaining, the pricing of items has to be sufficient to cover our costs. We have to cover the cost of wages and benefits as well as all of our supplies, which is primarily food, the stuff that we feed our kids. And there's also a thing under P D E called Paid Lunch Equity. And what that means is the price of a paid student lunch must be greater than or equal to the difference between the federal subsidy for a paid lunch and a free lunch. So you take the money you get from the feds for a free lunch, less the money you get for a paid lunch and that difference has to be equal to, or, well, our paid lunch price should be equal to or greater than that amount. That's what's known as Paid Lunch Equity. Now, right now, under the Seamless Summer Option, federal reimbursement per meal is higher than normal. So it's gonna be a transition back to lower reimbursement as well as paid meals. So come along with me, let's dive into those numbers here. So under the Seamless Summer Option, everybody's getting free lunch and from the feds, we're receiving approximately four dollars and fifty-six cents per lunch that we sell to the kids. Now, under the equivalent, under the National School Lunch Program, a free meal is, we're reimbursed three dollars and sixty-six cents, almost a dollar less. Reduced is a little less at three twenty-six and for each paid student, we only receive thirty-five cents. So the difference between a free lunch and a paid lunch is three dollars and thirty-one cents. Breakfast, the differentials are similar as well. We do receive some state reimbursement for our breakfast and lunches, but again, it's only ten cents per meal. So it's not really, you're, we're not talking big dollars here. Federal is really the, the money reimbursement where it is. So prior to all of our free lunches back in nineteen twenty, our elementary lunch price was two dollars and sixty cents and two dollars and ninety cents at the secondary level. And so we increased those prices when we moved to twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two by ten cents per year, even though they were technically still free. So we weren't charging our students for these lunches, but we were moving them up. Because again, as I mentioned, Paid Lunch Equity requires us to meet this price differential. And then you can see the federal law here. There can be a required increase under this Paid Lunch Equity and there's a whole spreadsheet I can share with you. It's really boring. The maximum that they can require us to increase it is ten cents. However, the school food authority may increase it more than ten cents if it's necessary. So previously, we've only really done the mandated maximum of ten cents per year and we haven't really caught up. As you can see, going up, you know, ten cents a year, we're only up to about three dollars, three dollars and ten cents. Whereas the Paid Lunch Equity says you should be at three thirty-one. So we're sitting, you know, it's constantly moving up, but we're constantly trailing that sort of thing. So right now, per Paid Lunch Equity, our prices really need to be higher. And Congress has not extended the Universal Free Lunch Program. And as you're aware, when you go to Wise or Giant or Walmart, inflation is driving up the cost of supplies as well as the cost of wages and benefits. So we're proposing a one-time jump here of approximately forty-five cents per meal in both breakfast and lunch prices to bring our prices in line with the guidelines and to ensure that our Food Service Fund remains financially solvent. So breakfast will go to two dollars and five cents or two twenty and lunch will go to three twenty-five or three fifty-five. Now, some things to keep in mind, free and reduced prices do not change. Free is still free. If your student qualifies for free lunch, it's still free. And reduced price breakfast is still thirty cents and forty cents for lunch. We will be sending school messenger notices to parents in the summer to remind them of this change and to let them know how to apply for free and reduced meals if they believe they qualify. And we will also be increasing the prices of our à la carte items, the chips, the cookies, the ice cream to make sure that we are covering our costs because the costs are going up. We are seeing an increase on the invoices that we receive from our suppliers. So with that, just so you know, we're not the only ones raising prices all around us. Comparable prices are going up. If you go to McDonald's, your hamburger Happy Meal could run you upwards of five dollars. Same thing at Wendy's, same thing at Panera. So, I mean, food prices are going up. It's getting more expensive. So even at three dollars and twenty-five cents or three dollars and fifty-five cents, school lunch really still is the best value for feeding our kids on a daily basis. And our Food Service Department remains committed to ensuring that our kids are fed every day so that the learning can continue.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question. What are the, like, income limits? Are they equitable to, like, the SNAP limits or, or?
Yes, the, the limits are set by the U S government and it's a percentage of the federal poverty level. It's automatically calculated and it's automatically increased each year. And so that goes into the calculation software. So when folks apply online and they enter their income, it's automatically compared to the federal limits. And then the software will let them know you qualify for free, you qualify for reuse or where they fall. Yep.
Are there other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to our first action item under Old Business and that is the new textbooks and literary titles for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Mrs. Moser?
Yes, you had that attached for you earlier. The only comment I would make, Jamie's good catch last time. This person with the Freedom Writer awareness, it is a Freedom Writer that we are indeed bringing forward as a title. Otherwise, it is as you have already received it.
Motion to approve. By Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? Doctors, yes. Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unser-Gerfissero?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Then under Board Action, New Business, our first item is the election of the Board Treasurer. Is there a nomination for Board Treasurer? For a second? Moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Ms. Lyons. Are there any other nominations? During none, we vote on this pink piece of paper, I believe. So if you write the name of the person you're voting for.
Since there's only one, do we need to do this?
Yeah, do we need to do this?
Not technically.
Then let us not do that. But I think we should vote. So may I ask for all in favor of electing Dr. Jablonski for another term as treasurer? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much, Dr. Jablonski. Next is the election of the P S B A voting delegates for our folks doing this for the first time. This is the big P S B A meeting in November. It's Saturday, November fifth and it is now, and perhaps forever operating in a hybrid capacity. So you can go in person. I forgot to double-check where it is this time. Is it Hershey again? Yeah, or you can go online and we need two folks who are, who will go and will vote and they will tell you how to do that. It's, I've done it before. It's really a privilege to get to meet up with school directors from all over the state and learn about issues that we share in common with other districts, but also issues that, you know, are, are distinct from the ones that we see here. It's great to learn what's going on across the state. So are there two folks who would be interested in being the voting delegates to the P S B A Delegate Assembly on Saturday, November fifth?
I would suggest anyone who hasn't had a chance, that it really is worth for all those reasons. So.
Is there a second person who would like to go?
I'll go.
Great, thanks, Jean. Is there anybody else? I suppose we could, lots of people wanna do it. We would vote. Okay, I'm gonna thank Jamie and Heather for being willing to do that. I think you'll find it really interesting. We don't, do we vote on that?
I mean, you could make a motion.
Motion for Ms. Haynos and Ms. Lyons to be our P S B A voting delegates.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Unser-Gerfissero. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next up is moving the Linton IDF to the library storage room. John, I assume that's you.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes. So what is happening, as you see in the description, we are remodeling the maker space into a classroom and right now there is a computer box on the wall that needs, really needs to be moved. And so it needs to go over the wall into the library storage area and have all the wires rewouted and have it come out of the learning space there. So we would ask that you approve the quote this evening from Dauphin so that we can take care of this over the summer and have it ready to roll for the new school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion?
I think the importance of this room has been demonstrated multiple times, so I'm glad we're doing this.
All right, roll call votes, please, Paul. Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unser-Gerfissero?
Yeah.
Doctor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. That brings us to the policies for first reading.
We have four policies we're bringing forward, revision of existing policies along with some renumbering. Most notable would be the acceptable use of internet computers and network resources. So that is updating that policy as, as well as the acceptable use policy for students and staff.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Haynos. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Do we do that by roll call? Sure, roll call. Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unser-Gerfissero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried. And the next item is the employment agreement, which I guess we're tabling until we receive the contract. This is to appoint Mrs. Kathy Moser as the interim superintendent. But we are not able to take action until we receive a contract from our solicitor. So I need a motion to table that.
So moved.
Second, second. Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Unser-Gerfissero. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. That brings us to new business and the Board President's Report. I just wanted to comment on how moving it has been to be part of the transitions of this week, the, from the graduation of our students to the graduation of our, of our faculty and staff as both groups in very different times in their lives move on. And it's an honor to be part of the, part of the community and part of the institution that has housed them at their, at the beginning of their lives and, and farther along in their lives. So I'm just grateful to have had that opportunity. Assistant Superintendent's Report.
I too just have a simple oral one tonight. I wanna thank you, first of all, for allowing me to give the certificates and, and, you know, take part in tonight's opportunity to celebrate the faculty and staff who are here. And I'll use another twenty seconds to say, I do believe the library was beautifully decorated tonight by Mrs. Young and Mrs. Neveker. I always enjoy what they put together for us and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board liaison or committee reports for this evening?
You have the I U report. Our board retreat at the same time last week.
Son had a very short meeting. You have the minutes there. Before you and I give a brief update in executive session regarding personnel with the director search. So you guys all have that.
Thank you. Any others?
Do we have a, the alumni, do we know the spaghetti dinner results? Who's our alumni liaison?
Jamie, is that you? I guess we do not have anyone able to speak to that.
Okay, I was just curious.
It was delicious. I did get spaghetti from the spaghetti dinner. Well done. I think you're sufficiently humorous.
Okay, thank you, everybody. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any item anyone needs or would like to have pulled out and voted on separately? Motion to approve. Moved by Dr. Jablonski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Unser-Gerfisera. Any discussion?
It's a long one.
It is a long one.
Lots of good donations.
All right, I will call vote please, Paul. Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Unser-Gerfisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And that brings us to Director's comments. Start on the side.
Sure. So I, there's a lot of places this week, as I think all of us were. Field days everywhere were amazing as always. Award ceremony at the middle school was lovely. This was my first time getting to participate in graduation. And that was, I went home, and like that's, it was, it was really cool. I wasn't sure. I hadn't been part of something like that before, like up on the stage. So I wasn't sure what it was going to be like. But it is a really touching thing to sit and watch all these people who have come through the district and are moving on and taking a little bit of all of us out into the world. And that was a really nice thing to be part of. So thank you to everyone who who puts all those things together.
Thank you. I just want to shout out to Anne Gock, Glock, Gockley. My gosh, I'm combining people's names. She has been a teacher to two of my children. And really, I can honestly say probably one of the first educators to completely get one of my kids that I've, well, maybe not the first, but definitely at the high school. And make an impact on his life, not just through chemistry, but personally. I shared with Paula at one point that she's the epitome of a, of an educator. No matter what's going on in her life, she keeps it professional. And I just want to say kudos to her. And I wish she wasn't retiring, but I'm glad that she's going to enjoy life after here and hopefully come back and sub. So that's awesome. Ms. Zap also has had the enjoyment of three of my children. And I think she did instill a love for math in two of my kids that maybe didn't love math. So I thank her. I could go on and on with lots of other educators, but those two just popped for me, and I wanted to say a specific thank you. Graduation was awesome. It, surprisingly, being on the board for the number of years that I've been on, it's one of the things I enjoy the most. Most people, even my own friends, when their own kids graduate, like, oh, graduation. I'm like, I love graduation. I love hearing the kids speak. I thought the speeches were amazing this year. They really all could have combined their speeches because, not that they said the same thing, but they all had the same theme. But they all said it in a different flavor, and it was amazing. And they did amazing. It was nice to see something normal and feel something normal. And I think that's contributed by Lewisburg staff, Lewisburg our board, Lewisburg administrators and our community. And thank you to Bucknell for providing a space that where people had lots of their people there to enjoy it. It was nice to see a crowd, which was awesome. I have to say something about softball. So my oldest daughter was on the team when softball kind of made a comeback a few years ago when they won the first game in like a lot of years. It was like they'd won the World Series. It was kind of funny, but it was awesome. So to see that they're doing well in postseason competition, kudos to them. Good job. Good luck. That's awesome. And I have to shout out to Lacks because they played their first state game Tuesday night. And so anyone that has positive vibes to give, please give them or come watch. Don't know when we're playing yet, or don't know where we're playing yet, but district website, the PIAA district website, you can buy tickets and come support. It's awesome. That's about it. Thank you for taking care of my kids, and I appreciate everything you guys do.
I wanted to say thank you to the bus drivers finishing off this year. Bus drivers are so important. I know, starting the year, there was the concern of having enough bus drivers and coming to the end of the year with all the trips, all the places people are going, just how much we rely on bus drivers. And I know specifically, Mr. Gary is the bus driver that I deal with, and he is wonderful. I can't say enough about him and how much the little kids really look forward to getting on the bus and how great he is. So I just really wanted to give a shout out there. I also wanted to build on what Mr. Fetter was saying earlier about relationships and how important they are. And I think we've seen that tonight with, we're retiring and having the relationships they've had and the impact in the community. And I think that the other thing we really need to realize when we look at how important relationships are, is our role in that. I think that's where the teachers really have gotten that, that they understood how important their relationships were and how we can role model. So not only advocating for there being close relationships, but also making sure that we're kind of looking inward and reflecting to make sure we are also putting that out there with the climate of what is currently going on and things some other schools are dealing with. Sometimes positive relationships really are what make that difference. For me, I know that's really important. And just listening to everybody today, it really reminded me of a book that has been really important to me throughout my career called Turning Stones. And in that, it speaks about a non, actually a group of nuns on a bus trip. And one of the nuns kept wandering off, and somebody goes to find them. And when they find them, they find them because they're stopping in the desert, flipping over a stone. And they ask her, why did I, why did you do this? And the nun says, because this place is now different because I've been here. And I feel that's something, listening to all these teachers speak, and it's something that I always really held with me in my career, is we might not think we have the biggest impact, but places are different because we've been here. And I think that was shown a lot with the teachers that spoke and what people said about them and how big an impact they've had on this community.
I have been smiling, like, for how long have we been here? Like, a while. And my cheeks hurt a little bit because of all the amazing things that we're doing. And, you know, there feels like this almost disconnect, knowing that there are some, you know, there is a school district in Texas that's just an incredible morning right now. And I look around at all of you, and I know how much we all care about our students and care about our teachers. And I'm just really grateful for that. As you're fed, I went to high school here for a year and a half, right? I was a, I went to three different high schools, next mom and dad. And you don't, I don't know about you guys, but I'm in an age now where things stand out from my classes in high school. And I can't remember all of them, and I can't remember all the teachers. But let me tell you who I remember. Mr. Fennel. Because Mr. Fennel was my honors English teacher in 11th grade. And I never laughed so hard or learned so much. He is what a teacher. That is, when I became a teacher, he was one of the people in my repository that inspired me. And Lewisburg, incredibly fortunate to have someone like Mr. Fennel. When I came back in there, like, he's teaching French. I was like, he's doing what? Kind of what? That's an incredible resource to have. And Mrs. Fennel and all of the teachers. I mean, Mrs. Gop's energy, please. Like, she's just, if anyone's ever seen her out dancing at her husband's band, I can't even, she's like, come on, man! Like, whoa. Just really caring community members. And I'm, I literally am just grateful to be here. So thanks.
I think over the past few weeks, we've been reminded constantly of why we are all here in the room tonight and every other Thursday night. It's just always a great reminder, not that we don't have those reminders throughout the year, but it's just a really good, you know, to see these milestones. And, you know, sitting at the Sun Tech graduation last evening, unfortunately, I was out of town for the Lewisburg graduation the night before. But just to see the kids walk across the stage and just to see, again, them achieving an award over at Sun Tech or their diploma here, you know, in the district. They worked so hard to get to these places. And, you know, just to see state champions and district champions time after time. You know, again, these are all just constant reminders of why we do the, you know, this work and, you know, why we show up to these board meetings. So it's been a very rewarding couple of weeks. Thank you all for, I'm sure you guys are getting very tired and exhausted at this point. But thank you for the work that everybody in our district is doing, all faculty and staff. You know, just really, again, I go back to the, the words I said before everybody scooted out. I wanted to make sure I expressed that to them while they were in the room. But that relational aspect that we really do focus on here in the district is just so important. And, you know, we see it, you know, for decades now, we've seen how instrumental that piece is. So you don't see that in every district, you know, but like I said, that's something that I think the Lewisburg district has done well and, you know, will continue to do well.
I have to echo everything that's been said, definitely about the relationships. And just to hear Mr. Wetzel kind of normalize for me many years later, the emotions that run high because my son teared up when he had to live Cleveland Town. And he said, I'm really going to miss Mr. Wetzel and Mrs. Reber. So, wow, okay, I was like, shoot, what's happening? Will he go to the middle? You know, and now to understand that this is all, the kids really do feel safe and they feel nurtured in these buildings. So I'm not going to go on because so much, you know, so many good things have already been said. But thank you, and thank you to the retirees.
Thank you. Karen?
I also want to honor the retirees. I have three very quick stories. So a few people have said Mrs. Zap inspired kids to find joy in math that may not have otherwise. My son happened to be absent the day that clubs were picked, one of the marking periods, and he ended up in the puzzle club in her room. He said about the kinds of clubs she offers. So she gave him the chance to pick a different club if you really want to. He's like, no, I'll do Sudoku's with you. So that's what they did. They, in the puzzle club, he learned how to do Sudoku's and Kenkens with Mrs. Zap. And he did a dodgeball, which is a really big deal for a sixth grade boy. I knew Mrs. Fennel before I knew Mrs. Fennel, and I didn't realize it until something came up and I had to search for her. And I teach an engineering camp at Bucknell. And years ago, there was a kid, and, you know, tuition is, you know, a couple hundred bucks or whatever back then. But she knew that they wouldn't be able maybe to afford it, or the parents wouldn't let them go. And so she and I, this, like I said before, I knew her, I only knew her from email. I thought she must be the sweetest lady ever. She arranged with me to tell me the circumstances, you know, as well as she could. And so, and found a way for that student to get the ride and get packed and get all the things to get up to campus and stay there and be able to go to camp. And then she's been sending recommendation letters every year since. So I always, you know, and that's when, once I got on the board and I got to know her, I thought, that was so cool. So she took the time to reach out to really make an experience for a kid who would not definitely otherwise have been able to. So if she's doing that for one kid, I mean, if she's doing that for as many kids as I think she must be doing it for, she's spending a lot of time in phone calls and emails and handwritten letters, because some of these used to be handwritten recommendations. Please admit this student, like, can we work it out? And then I also wanted to give a big shout out to middle school boys soccer. Didn't they also go undefeated or something? Yeah, right? What was their final situation? Are they like at districts or?
No, they don't do that.
Oh, I don't even know. But like, whatever, the, oh, tournament. I'm sorry, they had a tournament, right? And they still.
The usual junior high tournament.
Yeah, so. Kudos to them.
Great season for the
Right.
mini dragons.
And, yeah, I wanted to share, like, the, compared to the last couple of years, the kids just had a great year. They really did. And so that's to recognize everyone that makes that happen. And, you know, what's so interesting about graduations, and I just wanted to share this quickly. You notice the kids who've got all the cords and the men are like way down, walking across the stage, and they're smiling big. And then you see the kids who, you know, are half unzipped with their robe, and they're also strutting across the stage because everyone is just really happy. You make the experience for all of them, like, you know, you had a great time here, and this is a great way to, you know, acknowledge and celebrate you. So just really fantastic end of the year.
That's right.
Well, I don't know what I could add to all that. Congratulations to the retirees. Well deserved. And congratulations to all of you for getting to another year.
Yeah, I would, I don't think there's anything more we can say for the retirees. Just thank you to the principals for all the kind of words that you shared about just their career and the impact that they've made on our students and even each other and the community. Graduation was spectacular. It was really, I think it hit me more that we're moving more past the COVID because it was so normal. We were at Bucknell last year, but there's still the protocols. And they have a beautiful venue and certainly, you know, hope to continue in that tradition. Even though they set it up, there's still a tremendous amount of work that our staff does to prepare everything. It looks seamless, but it's only because of their experience and all of the time and effort that they put into the program. Sun Tech also had their certificate program. So that was good to see as certainly, we had some changes that we had to do because of last year, but seeing all of the kids in their cap and gowns, well, their gowns, not their caps, but that they get to rewear them. Oftentimes, you get that kind of regalia, and you never really have another chance to use it. But it was good to see that they had that. Next board meeting on June 9th, we'll have an update on the middle school schedules. Kathy Moser, George Rosen, and I still continue to meet with teachers to refine incorporating some different ideas and feedback and input. So that, that's been continuing, and a version has been shared with the middle school staff at this point. But we'll have an update for that at the next meeting. And again, thank you Green Dragon Foundation and Bucknell for their kind donations. Fortuitously, we, we finally got more tables and chairs that are green coming from Bucknell. And I know that they're still going to be put to good use. I think we've really kind of learned something about outdoor spaces and really take advantage of that when the weather allows us to do that. And I think our kids appreciate that, that break. And it's just something that's a little special that we can continue to do for them.
Then that brings us to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. And so I will stick this in the order in which I received them. So Kimberly Rexler?
Yeah, I really enjoyed the retirees' presentation and all of that honoring them. And here, for one thing, I want to just let the board know. I want to say some wonderful things about Andrew Jones, but also let you know how very disappointed I am that we're losing him. It's come to my attention that there were some things we could have done to keep him. But maybe you guys know that. I hope you'll pay attention. And I hope that you will really put a big effort into, I don't know if you can find anybody as good as Andrew. He really transformed the strings program. And he's just a fabulous instructor. He's a fabulous person. And we're really going to miss him. It was really beautiful at the the last, the high school pops concert, and some of the kids spoke about him. And it honestly was, you know, the kids always, we have great relationships with a lot of different teachers. And they always say nice things, but the things they say about Mr. Jones were one level up. And we're really, we're really losing something phenomenal. And I want to urge the board to really put a big effort. And I don't know if you can find anyone nearly as good as Mr. Jones, but do your best. Find somebody. And I also, you know, one, one of the criticisms I've heard, not speaking for Mr. Jones at all, I cannot speak for him. I haven't spoken to him personally about why he's leaving. But what I've thought about this before, and I know the parents have thought about this, strings is the only musical, you think of the three parts of our music program? Band and chorus singing, and then the strings. Strings is the only one where you only have one instructor. And it has to go from, you know, cover three buildings. So I would urge the board to think about somehow balancing that work, right? You have a couple of chorus instructors, you have multiple band instructors. And Mr. Jones was doing strings for Linton Town, for Icon, and for the high school. But really, I just, I just want to end with a compliment to him. I know he's not here, but he was fantastic and made a big difference. And I really think he's part of what makes Lewisburg so special. And I hope that we can, we can do something good for our kids and try to find somebody who can try to replace him. I think he's irreplaceable. And I'm really sorry for using him. Just one other comment. I appreciate, you know, one comment about Texas. It was really horrifying, obviously, what happened in Baldi. And I have not, I was here a couple of months ago to remember the four-year anniversary of Parkland. These things keep happening and keep getting worse. And I just want to urge the board to be transparent and to provide more information to the community in terms of what we're doing to keep our kids. And I just want to urge the board to be transparent and to provide more information to the community in terms of what we're doing to keep our kids safe. At the school board meeting I spoke at in, this was probably March. You know, we heard from all the guidance counselors and the school psychologists about mental health and made a lot of neat ideas of things to do to try and make it a safer space and deal with mental health challenges. And I hope some of those programs have been input and are taking place. But as a parent and as a community, I would really appreciate hearing about those things and what's going on. That's it. My most important point is I just want to really pay, pay credit and honor the Mr. Jones. Because he is fantastic and I wish him well wherever he goes. And I will just hope that we have somebody else.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Newgarden.
Would you mind if I have somebody else go first? Is that okay?
That's okay. Put you on the bottom. Jennifer Coughlin.
Jennifer Coughlin, I have a child of middle school, child of high school. I wanted to echo what Mrs. Drexler said about Mr. Jones. That's a huge loss to the district and the community as well. It's a real shame that we're losing him. He's been wonderful to my son. He's the only reason he's still playing the viola. So I, I appreciate what he's done for my kids. What I came to speak about was the schedule changings at the middle school. After being told by the administration that the staff is enthusiastic about the proposed schedule, even though it was unable to find a single staff member who was in fact enthusiastic, I created an anonymous survey that I sent to all of the teachers. I received 28 responses out of 32 teachers. Ninety-seven percent of the teachers indicated that the proposed schedule is not appropriate for middle school students. One hundred percent of the teachers rated the morale of the staff at or below a two out of five. Ninety percent of the teachers agree that the proposed changes are not developmentally appropriate for middle school students, especially while still recovering from post-pandemic learning gaps, loss of interpersonal communication skills and mental health struggles. Change with clearly defined objectives can benefit many. Change without defined objectives or a clear understanding of the current middle school program will not benefit the students and will more likely hurt students. The proposal to switch to Chromebooks is also under consideration. Is this another change being proposed without a defined objective or a clear understanding of the implications to student and staff? The process up to this point with this lack of transparency is disappointing. Teachers and staff spent time and energy creating an alternative schedule, which was disregarded. Teachers and staff received threats of disciplinary action for disagreeing publicly and were left with no voice. How has this been permitted to happen? How can we implement massive changes without considering the teacher's input when they share decades of experience amongst them? When did we in Lewisburg stop valuing our teachers?
Thank you. Ms. Carney.
I'm Krista Carney. I spoke before previously concerning the middle school schedule. Currently I have a graduate who graduated in 2015, who is now in graduate school at Columbia. So I think she's doing pretty well. And my other daughter will be a senior next year. I also have two stepchildren, one who has graduated and one who is also in Lewisburg still. So if it's best for kids, we'll do it. This motto of Lewisburg schools has always given me a sense of satisfaction with the district that my children attend or attended. I felt confident that the district was making decisions that were aligned with best practices, peer-reviewed research and valuable input from Lewisburg teachers. However, information that has been trickling out regarding the latest policies, scheduling and administrative practices in Lewisburg schools makes me question sincerity of this motto. I'm a firm believer in transparency, which is what has prompted me to speak this evening. No one knows our school and our district, our students better than the teachers who have been here for years. Is it best for the kids for the recommendations of those teachers regarding scheduling to be disregarded? There is a teachers committee regarding the new schedule at the middle school. Little to none of the recommendations of that committee are present in this new schedule. Teachers are being realigned to teach more than one grade, breaking down the team approach that has served our district so well. Teachers will have at least twice the prep. This is because when you first teach a subject at, at a new level, it takes much more work to develop lessons than it does when you have had years of experience teaching something. It has been estimated that it takes five years to master the curriculum. It's a new placement. Is this best for kids? Teachers have felt that their concerns were being ignored. As a final attempt to do what is best for kids, many teachers were planning on coming to this meeting to speak directly to the school board and the public, not to criticize the district, but to share their expert opinions, which have been disregarded. This was planned to be done in a professional manner because the teachers have the kids as their first priority and they are advocating for their students. Earlier this week, teachers received an email warning them that they would face professional discipline if they spoke at this meeting. Teachers who have disagreed with policies throughout the school year have already been called into disciplinary meetings and told that they may bring junior representation. Is this best for kids? Not only were teachers' opinions and concerns disregarded, a baseline of what is actually happening in the classrooms was not gathered. The new schedule to include STEM, BCIT, content area literacy and library is not necessary as all of these skills are already being taught within the current classes. No survey of activities, no questions, no observations of teaching has been done with any teacher that I've spoken with. No conversations with students regarding their experiences has occurred either. The schedule to accommodate these changes was created by committee to, by committee of teachers, but it was entirely disregarded. Instead, an administrator with limited teaching experience at the high school level, nearly 20 years ago, pushed these changes through. Twenty years ago was a different world than teaching today. I know that because I was teaching then and I still am teaching today. However, now I have the added experience of being all but dissertation for my PhD in curriculum and instruction. My views and opinions are not uninformed. One of the rationale for changing the schedule was to have ensemble time as part of the school day as if that were a new thing, an advantage over the norm or a special favor. As one of the 12 chairs of PMEA's Curriculum and Instruction Board, I can tell you that having ensemble rehearsal during school day is the norm in Pennsylvania as it is in most of the United States. As parents, we pay taxes that are higher than sixty-three percent of the school districts in Pennsylvania. We expect that our school district will have ensemble rehearsals and instruction during the school day with adequate time for our students to continue in the music program at the level that has been set through the years. Anyone who has attended concerts and other performances of our music students and appreciates the time and effort involved in creating the level of student musicians at Lewisburg would never think about cutting any time from their rehearsals. I beg the district to at least postpone the implementation of the new schedule until there is a review of the schedule, which includes the experience of the teachers. Similar changes were pushed through at a former school district where Dr. Ba served as director of teacher, teaching and learning that quote included the elimination of teaming and realignment of staff. Dr. Ba already had the schedule change and faculty realignment on her resume, which was given to her prospective school district in Colorado months ago. This indicates that no matter what is best for our kids, she needed these changes to happen. Lewisburg was a stepping stone for Dr. Ba. Our kids should not be a stepping stone. That is not best for any kid. Thank you very much.
Ms. Newgarden.
My name is Sarah Newberry. And I have been a resident of Lewisburg for about sixteen and a half years. I have two children in the school district, one finishing up her 10th grade year and one finishing up her sixth grade year. My husband and I chose this area because of its commitment to education. Recently, our trust in the school board and superintendent has been greatly impacted by the lack of transparency observed from both the parent and staff perspective. Last month, the music ensemble directors were called upon to discuss the proposed schedule changes at the middle school level that would adversely affect the time dedicated for the music programs for next school year. It was only then that many parents like myself became aware that there was even a schedule and curriculum discussing going on. At first I was disheartened to hear that instructional time for music, as well as the option to do multiple ensembles, could possibly be decreased. Then I was disheartened to hear that my already stressed student would be responsible for maintaining a passing grade for three additional classes next year. Then my heart sank when I heard about the extended blocks. Then they became skinny blocks and then this and then that. I am not an ignorant person. I thrive on research and observation until the truth is revealed. For the past month and a half, I am still left scratching my head at the rationale of the proposed schedule and curriculum changes. I can only imagine what the staff must be going through at this point, trying to close out the current school year while stressing about what their day-to-day workload and expectations will look like for next school year. Teachers need time to prep and hand in their lesson plans. We know this, but as of today, you are leaving them in limbo. Unclear of these changes and the impact that they would have on not only the middle school students and staff, but also trickle-down effect at the high school level, I communicated with all of the school board members directly for answers. One member chided me for not knowing that the, that this discussion had been ongoing for, quote, many months. I can assure you that I was not the only parent who didn't realize that there was a game going on, so to speak. Yes, I do take responsibility for not actively pursuing my civic duty by participating in every school board meeting. However, in an effort to play catch-up, I simply asked them, why these changes? Why now? And not one of you could give me an answer or any other parent or any other staff a direct answer to those questions. Between the April fourteenth school board meeting until this very evening, staff and parents have witnessed the schedule change from eighty-minute blocks for core classes to thirty-minute blocks. In an effort to squeeze in three more courses, the schedule has evolved into such a manner that the educational professionals outside of our district are gobsmacked at the sheer insanity of it all. It is my understanding that staff are not allowed to make remarks that could be disparaging in nature about the district. However, staff should be allowed to hold an open dialogue with the superintendent and each of you without fear of repercussions. Fear is no way to lead. From my perspective, teachers and staff district-wide, district-wide have essentially been bullied regarding these proposed schedule changes. Teachers should be allowed to voice their expert opinion without fear of retaliation from the administration, for they are the experts. Have any of you on this board taken the time to observe any of the classes in the middle school? In an independent survey that Jen was talking about, ninety, ninety-six percent of those respondents are dissatisfied with the proposed schedule changes, with a hundred percent rating their overall morale at a level two or below. This speaks volumes and directly contradicts what some school board members are stating. The middle school teachers are happy with the changes and that there's not a problem with morale. To the school board members and administration, I do want to thank you for your time and your dedication to our district. This is quite the commitment to our community, as you are our voice for action that benefits the student as a whole. I would like to address the superintendent directly. I commend you for taking this position at a time when the entire world stopped and had a global crisis. No experience could have prepared you for that. Keeping up with those changes and policies must have been maddening. Now imagine you're a parent in this school district, having to keep up with the ever-evolving news regarding a possible schedule change, not to mention having to explain to your eleven-year-old kiddo that they might be responsible for up to ten transitions in a single day. The changes that are, are, that we're experiencing are maddening. Now imagine you're a staff member and you invited the superintendent to observe your class, but they never showed. Imagine inviting the superintendent to a luncheon that recognized middle, middle and high school students for amazing accomplishment, only to have the chair reserved for their superintendents empty. How maddening is that silence? Please, I implore the administration and the school board in clear and precise words to provide an answer to why these changes? Why now? There has been no stability or transparency in regards to the evolution of this schedule and curriculum change. To top it off, the superintendent is leaving our district at a time with so much uncertainty. Is it possible to slow this train until the rest of the tracks have been laid? Thank you.
I believe, is it Mr. Zuck?
Sorry, when I came late, the retirees were here and I didn't. So my name's Kenzo. I have five kids in the district. One's graduated. Uh, one's actually at state, which is why he wasn't here for the virus. I'm thinking he's around the four by eight. My comments are in regards to the schedule. Specifically, does the middle school model, which has been applied in this community for decades, in fact, I think we kind of originated a part of it. Does it make a difference? There's an article in Educational Science written by Mark Olafson and David Knight in 2018. It says the middle school model does matter. They studied standardized test scores across math and English, as well as absenteeism across the entire state of Texas over three years. Amongst the other things that they found, they found that schools with fewer classes in the day, and I E. Transitions, had a significantly higher value for academic and attendance value-added effects. And they also argued that fewer classes allowed young students to explore and develop their identities. My son Micah, through his, he had a lot of opportunities at the middle school and he made the most out of them. And as such, like he was, he's achieved really, really well. And, and it's, to be frank with you, like, I'm, I'm a busy parent. I don't look at every single thing that he's doing. A lot of what he achieves, he achieves because his teachers are really helping. He doesn't, I'm, I'm not pushing him. This is, this is all things that he is leaning from the resources he has in the district. And it speaks very, very well for the district. The other independent predictor of success that they found in this study was that the schools need high-quality teachers who are specifically prepared and who are really, really invested in the adolescent learner, because they're different. Sadly, to echo one of our parents here, we're losing one of those really invested teachers in Mr. Jones. He has decided to pursue an opportunity in the district that feels, he feels better, values his particular skill set. My kids, three of them, directly benefited from his instruction and they achieved very well, both academically and personally. We heard from Mr. West last meeting that morale is low, also from this survey. And I wonder if this whole discussion on schedule could have gone a different direction and maybe we could have retained Mr. Jones. Who, if you were at that concert, when they finished Rhapsody in Blue, I mean, holy cow, that was conflict. I would have paid to go hear that. There was a standing ovation of which the director takes some credit. Then Brian says, by the way, some of you may not understand or know that Mr. Jones will be here next year. This is his last concert, to which there was immediately like, oh, you know, kind of kidding, but boo, that's, that's so sad. And then three seconds later, standing ovation. And then Andrew gave his remarks and there's another standing ovation. And we're listening and, and I, I'm sad about that. I'm really sad. To close, I'm going to quote somebody who speaks on the world stage. She has an article in, let's see, the Harvard Business Review. Her name is Nillafer Merchant. She's part of an eighteen billion dollar brand, I guess. A big name in motivational speaking. The article is entitled Culture Triumph, Culture Trump's Strategy. The article is entitled Culture Triumph, Culture Trump's Strategy Every Time. The best strategic idea means nothing in isolation. If the strategy conflicts with how a group of people already believe, behave, and make decisions, it will fail. On the flip side, a culturally robust team can turn even a mediocre strategy into a winner. I think it's really, really important to consider what the middle school teachers have been through in these last months. And we need to do whatever we can to make sure that they are supported and they feel both heard and valued.
Thank you. I believe we have at least one comment online.
Yes, with the board receiving email earlier, I'll read that email. It is from Martha Pillen. She writes, "I will never again have kids at the middle school as our youngest will start high school in the fall. However, I am concerned enough about how these new schedule changes will affect teachers and students that I cannot be restrained from speaking out. I've worked with kids of all grades in the school district at the volunteer and now employee level, and I am deeply invested in the success of our kids. Without any prompting, I asked my son Ethan if it would be a good idea to implement Dr. Baugh's new middle school schedule. He said, no, that wouldn't be good for sixth graders to have so many transitions. It's hard enough for them to figure out their combinations on their lockers and get to all their classes as it is. We are very concerned. When students are still healing from the social and emotional impact of COVID-related cancellations and shutdowns, we want to increase their stress by asking them to do the impossible? No, we as the public insist on explanation for why these changes are being implemented. If the teachers have come up with an alternative solution which meets all of Dr. Baugh's objectives, why isn't it being considered? Why was it tossed aside without any discussion or consideration? Are we even listening to those who have firsthand experience with students, the teachers and staff? Who better to know what students lack and what's working? I'm deeply concerned that the ensemble times for choir, band and orchestra are getting cut in half. Research has proven time and time again that music and the arts are critical, if not the most critical, to a child's overall development as to all of the other subjects. If our goal is to produce well-rounded citizens, cutting ensemble times is not the answer. Neither is adding more stress to young kids by increasing the number of blocks and classes they attend. They are not developmentally ready in sixth grade. LASD has earned awards for their musical excellence many years in a row. People have moved into the district because of that purpose. If we cut ensemble times in half, we will lose that distinction. We will drive students to other districts. We will lose much of what we've worked for and that we as a community are so proud of. Ethan blossomed into a completely different person because of marching band and the special interest groups he joined in the middle school. He made so many new friendships, started inviting kids over for movie nights, decided to enlist in other new and interesting groups, and because of it, he learned to try new things and made it to states for TSA and math camps. I know these are things he wouldn't have been brave enough to try, had he not first had the confidence boost that marching band offered. Ethan didn't gain this confidence because of extra math classes, more STEM training or decreases in class times. He gained it from the related arts, and they should not be cut short. Meeting with 300 kids in two days is not reasonable to ask teachers to do, and it isn't reasonable for the students either. Lewisburg prides itself on its excellence in music, education and academics. Our current schedule works. We shouldn't fix something that's not broken. It's working. It's counterintuitive to change it. We elected you, our school board members. Please work for us by listening to our needs and responding to them. Let's all do what we instinctively know is best for students. Thank you for your time, Martha Pillen. We'll check online. There are any comments?
You have one.
Okay. That response. Yes, and it is a comment from Laura Graver. She writes, "Thank you to all retirees honored this evening. In regards to the proposed changes to the middle school schedule, I'm concerned that the 2223 school year is too soon for implementation. While the new courses seem like valuable academic content, the drastic change in schedule, especially for sixth-grade students feels abrupt. These students have only had one normal semester since all the COVID disruptions. Why not allow the schedule we know produced outstanding results for our students prior to COVID, get them back on track and then assess? The presentation demonstrating lower test scores since COVID disruptions, comments about teacher fatigue, teacher sub shortages and the HVAC school building project over the summer are a few of the reasons that lead me to believe a significant change in schedule would only add to the accumulated burden on our school district. Why not delay for just one year to complete the necessary professional development, get our students back to pre-COVID test scores and spend any extra efforts on securing the mental health of our students in 2223? Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you to everyone online and in the room who spoke this evening. And that brings us to the conclusion of the meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. For a second.
Second.
I move by Dr. Anissa Fessera, seconded by Dr. Jablonski, all in favor. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.